I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the February 27, 2018 meeting. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
And Sunny Zia.
First item of business, public comments on closed session items. Madam Secretary, are there any individuals that wish to speak at this time?
No, there are none.
Thank you. We're then going to adjourn recess to the closed session items, which include pending litigation pursuant to government code. Also, conference with real estate property negotiation pursuant to government code. This is the property located at 3320, 3340 Los Casas Daginaldi and 3320 Palos Verdes Avenue. We also have the item 1.6 on personnel pursuant to government code, public employee discipline, dismissal or release. Also 1.7, AFT negotiation item pursuant to government code. Those are the items before us in closed session. If there's no other comments by members of the board at this time, we will adjourn to our closed session item. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to reconvene the meeting, the Long Beach City College Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, February 27, 2018. This time, I'll call the meeting to order. If everyone could please stand, I would like to ask our Vice President Betty Miller to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Please join me in a salute to our flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, Vice President Miller. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Virginia Baxter.
Here.
Jeff Kellogg.
Here.
Vivian Malauulu.
Here.
Doug Otto.
Here.
Sunny Zia.
Here.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
President.
Thank you. Item 2.4, the report out on closed session item. I have one item to report out on. That is item 1.5. The board met with its legal counsel in closed session pursuant to government code, Section 549, 56.8. Directions provided by the district were provided to the district's legal counsel. That is on item 1.5. That is the only item to be reported out on closed session. Next item is 2.5, approval of minutes of the January 23, 2018 meeting. Now I can retain a motion in a second, please. Motion by Trustee Zia, second by Trustee Baxter. If there's no corrections to the minutes, Madam Secretary, if you could please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
2.5 carries. 2.6, introduction, special announcements. I'll turn it over to Superintendent President.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we have Linda Vasquez with College Campaign, who is with us to make a short presentation. Welcome, Linda.
Good evening, board members, family at Long Beach City. As mentioned, my name is Linda Vasquez, and I'm with the Campaign for College Opportunity. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with the campaign, but we are a broad-based, coalition-based, nonprofit advocacy organization that's dedicated to shaping higher ed policy in California. I do have several handouts. One of them is just a highlight of our 2018 year in review to give you a little bit more information about our work. But the reason why I'm here today is because I wanted to come in person and congratulate your campus for your efforts in implementing and scaling and doing fantastic work with the Associate Degree for Transfer Program. The campaign was instrumental in passing SB 1440 about eight years ago, and as you know, SB 1440 developed the Associate Degree for Transfer Pathway. We did that in partnership with hundreds of organizations across the state and institutions. And then Senator Alex Padilla was the author of the legislation. And as part of our ongoing efforts to ensure that those efforts are implemented well across the state, we love to find any opportunity we can to highlight bright spots and good work. And the work that Long Beach City is doing to scale up the ADT pathway is one that could be modeled across the state. So this is our second year in hosting an award celebration. We hosted our second annual, what we call our Champions of Higher Education Celebration in downtown LA, and that was this past December. And we had what I like to call like a who's who of higher ed leaders in the room. Jenna Napolitano, Kevin DeLeón was there. We honored, you know, Senator President Pro Tem for his efforts to support undocumented students across the state and to ensure that there was policies in place to support our and expand access for students in California. We had trustees, college presidents, and of course, representatives from various community colleges across the state, including Long Beach City. There's a handout in front of you here that gives just a breakdown of some of the metrics we looked at when considering which school is an exemplary school. You'll see that Long Beach City College here is listed as in the top three in the entire state for awarding the most ADTs out of total associate degrees, because this ADT pathway not only guarantees students an admission to the CSU, but it provides a very clear pathway for students into the CSU system with ensuring that they are not required to take more than 60 undergraduate units once they transfer to the CSU, that they're not required to take more than 60 units to graduate. And we're seeing a tremendous success rate with students who transfer to the CSU with an ADT than those who just transfer on the regular transfer pathway. So one of the things we looked at was not just simply award numbers for institutions, because you can have a campus that serves 40,000 students and then they only award 800. But the real value of this ADT is that it's a preferred pathway for students, because it's proven to be the most successful. So Long Beach City was named one of the nine, only nine, community colleges across the state that was honored. And part of the recognition was also doing a short, brief ADT video where we interviewed Chancellor Oakley and Secretary of State Alex Padilla, talking about the importance of the ADT. And Secretary of State Alex Padilla called this award by the campaign the equivalent of a Grammy and the World Series ring all rolled into one. So this award is not just, you know, a plaque. It means something, and it means something to our students, most importantly. And the reason why I came here in person was not just because to give you a round of applause, which you deserve, but also just to highlight that these efforts are all really on the ground, too. And this work doesn't happen overnight. Your transfer center counselors, your faculty, your leaders on campus all have worked together, and I'm sure over the last many, many years, to ensure that there was success in the ADT. So I just wanted to come in person and say congratulations for the efforts that you're leading to be an exemplary school across the state. And any chance that we get, when I'm meeting with partners, because I do lead all of our regional work, when I meet with partners, I like to show you off in all the other schools that we honored. So congratulations on the efforts. And as trustees and as leaders of your institutions, I encourage you to continue supporting the efforts on the ground by your staff and your counselors, your faculty, because they're really the ones that are rolling up their sleeves and ensuring that they're talking to students about this pathway. So just congratulations. What I'll do as well is I'll email you a video of the link with Chancellor Oakley and Secretary of State Alex Padilla. And we did a short recap video of the champion celebration event, so if you weren't able to attend, I'll send you a recap video of that, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent President?
Thank you. That will be it.
That's a nice way to start.
Yeah.
2.7, recording or reordering of the agenda. I've heard nothing from my colleagues. Is that correct? Now there'll be no reordering of the agenda, 2.7. Next to 2.8, ASB President's Report. Good timing. Welcome.
Sorry if you hear me huffing and puffing, Cam running, running late, literally. But yeah, you guys started the meeting on time. It was perfect. So first off, just wanted to say, Welcome Back Week was a huge success. We had events across both campuses throughout the entire first week of school, Monday through Friday, actually, with coffee and donuts on both campuses, meet the deans at both campuses, as well as resource barbecues, and a men's basketball game to cap off the entire week. Next, we have had our LAC and PCC Join a Club Days, where our clubs and organizations got together to showcase student life. LAC was two weeks ago, and then PCC was just last week. Earlier today, our PCC Cultural Affairs, along with several of our student leaders, held our Forgotten Images Exhibition showcasing African-American artifacts, African history of achievement and accomplishments, and history of racism and oppression against them, for students to learn and never forget, in celebration of Black History Month. Earlier today, attended the Auxiliary Board Meeting, providing feedback through, brought to us by our student surveys, where Helen and I pushed for, in order to get feedback on the good and what improvements are needed to be made as far as food services, as they are provided. I'm trying to have an open conversation with Dave McDonald, and we'll be reaching out to him in the coming days to improve the current situation. And just a few dates to look out for, Sunday, April 22. That's going to be a pretty fun event. It's going to be our 41st Annual Mini Grand Prix, along with Chili Cook Off. It's going to be going on from 10 to 2 p.m. at our Pacific Coast Campus, as well as Friday, May 18 at 7 p.m. It's our annual Spring Sing, where our individual students showcase their unique talents and skills, as well as several clubs and organizations put on skits. It's all a lot of fun, and I invite everybody to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job. You did it.
Next item, 2.9, public comments on agenda items. Madam Secretary, I have nothing for any speakers. Thank you. We'll then move to 3.1. This is the Citizens Oversight Committee, which is required to submit an annual report on its activities. So I will ask to begin a motion in a second. A motion by Trustee Baxter, second by Trustee Otto, to approve the Citizens Oversight Committee annual report. Superintendent President?
Yes, Elaine is not able to be here today, so Vice President Betty Miller has some talking points she can share.
Vice President Miller.
Good evening. The Citizens Oversight Committee Chairman Elaine McDonald was unable to attend today due to a family emergency, and she does send her apologies for not having the opportunity to present this to you. The nine-member Citizens Oversight Committee represents the community and is charged with monitoring expenditures of Measure E, 2008, and Measure LB from 2016, the bond funds, and reports to the public on the district's compliance with Proposition 39. It's a particularly important aspect of what they do. The Citizens Oversight Committee convenes twice a year in public meetings in accordance with the Brown Act, and also receives quarterly expenditure reports. The Long Beach City College Board received and approved the fiscal year 2016-17 annual performance and financial audits for bond funds on December 19, 2017. And the COC, the Citizens Oversight Committee, received the audits on January 29, 2018. There were no findings in that audit. It's a compliment to you as a district. The 2017 annual report, which I hope you've had an opportunity to look through, was approved by the Citizens Oversight Committee on January 29, 1918. And I'd like to touch on just a very few of the highlights from that report. It reflects installation of nearly 600 security campuses, cameras on both campuses. There was a grand opening of Building QQ and RR Buildings at the Pacific Coast Campus. That's the Electrical Technology Program and the Lifetime Learning Center. There are projects to enhance energy efficiency and green technology. And Building J, which is the liberal arts campus auditorium, upgrades commenced, and a groundbreaking event is scheduled for March 8. I want to thank Chairman Elaine McDaniel and the committee for their service. And the next Citizens Oversight Committee meeting is scheduled for August 27, 2018. It's at 6 p.m., and they do welcome visitors. Thank you.
Questions, comments, members of the board at this time on the Oversight Committee? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll. There's a motion in a second on approval of the Citizens Oversight Annual Report.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Here. Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, consent calendar. Are there any items at this time wish to be pulled for further discussion, our consent calendar items? Hearing none. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as is. Motion by Trustee Otto, second by Trustee Malauulu. Question, comments?
I do have one comment.
Chair recognizes Trustee Baxter.
Yes. I read the entire 139 pages, and I really want to commend the Ministry of Services Office for their very, very hard work.
Other comments, questions at this time? Unfortunately, I have not read all 100, and you just raised up a point. I did not go through all the change orders, lists, contractors, so on and so forth. And because it is the season, I will just abstain. I'm not sure if there is any, but I don't want to even take a chance on voting on something if there is a potential, with a campaign season in place, if somebody gave a contribution that I'm unaware of. So I'll abstain from, potentially. There's no conflict.
No, there are no contributions to your campaign. I guarantee it.
Yeah, well, if you don't mind, I'd rather take my own destiny in my own hands, so I'll abstain, just to be safe. Chair recognizes Trustee Otto.
Since Trustee Baxter's read the entire 169 pages, I wanted to ask her a question about something on page 72.
Okay.
I can't remember exactly what it is, but could you tell me about the 12th line?
No, but I could tell you on page 41 and 42, my questions.
I will move forward unless there's any further questions on the consent calendar item. Madam Secretary, if you could please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Abstain.
You threw me off there. Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye, except for page 72.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I believe there is personnel.
With the exception of?
Item 4.20 and 4.21.
President Kellogg should have read, yes.
It'll be so recorded for the student trustees.
For the student trustee.
And that is noted in the minutes.
All right. I'm moving through, making sure I'm not missing anything. Now we're to 5.1. Correct, Revised Salary Schedule. This is Student Trustee, who will be voting on this as well. Classification exempt from the merit system. This is an action item. This is to approve the revised exempt salary schedule to be effective March 1, 2018, as submitted. Could I entertain a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Malauulu, second by Trustee Zia. Questions, comments on this item? Madam Superintendent President, do we have a report? Do we need a report?
No report. This is done every year.
All right. Thank you. Questions, members of the board at this time?
Nope.
Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on item 5.1.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5.2, this is an employment contract. Melissa Gutierrez, interim Associate Dean, Health, Kineology, Science, and Mathematics. There will be an action item, so I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Zia, second by Trustee Baxter. This item is to be read per Brown Act. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from February 1, 2018, through December 31, 2018. Contract provides for an annual compensation of $119,499 alone with health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Questions, comments, members of the board at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Excuse me. Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 5.3, this is an employment contract, doctoral stipend. This is for Jean Duran, interim Vice President, Human Resources. The board approves the employment contract stipend. So again, I read this. The employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019. The contract provides for an annual compensation of $198,212, health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion in a second, please? Motion by Trustee Baxter, second by Trustee Otto. Questions, comments, members of the board? Last chance, Jean.
I'm still here.
Okay. Members of the board, questions, comments? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
That motion carries. Congratulations, Jean. 5.4, employment contract, doctoral stipend. This is for Kristen Olson, interim Associate Vice President, Human Resources. This is, again, the approval and to be written in the record. Employment contract provides for a term of employment from July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. Contract provides for an annual compensation of $182,083, health and welfare benefits and life insurance. Could I entertain a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Zia, second by Trustee Otto on this item. Members of the board, questions, comments at this time? Have we informed the personal commission of this?
They are aware.
They are aware. Their loss, our gain. No questions, comments at this time? Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Kristen. Academic Senate, 6.1, Do and Modified Courses. This is an action item. This is really through our academic senate. The Board of Trustees approves the new and modified courses effective fall 2018, as submitted. These have gone through all the regulatory. Do we need a report, Superintendent President?
Doctor Scott, do you have any report?
I did want to note that we have Dr. Laurel Bries in the audience, and she, one of her courses on the agenda tonight. It's a new underwater archaeology course, and it's the first in what we hope will become an award, a certificate for our students. And as you can see up here, there are some photos of her that I took earlier today. We have some fabulous equipment that we've bought, and it's really an exciting program. It's the only one in the country. And we're unique, and we're a leader. And she was telling me today that it's difficult to try to figure out the pathway when there's no pathway to follow. You know, we're creating our own, and so we're just, we're very excited about it. This could mean some reverse transfers from students who already have a bachelor's degree who come back here to get training that they couldn't get at a four-year. It also can mean jobs at the port for our students. It's really, it's all out there, and we don't know everything it could bring, but it's very exciting, and congratulations to Laurel, who's here.
Thank you. I forgot to entertain a motion, so I'll do so at this time, for motion 6.1. Motion by Trustee Otto, second by Trustee Malauulu. Questions, comments, members of the board? Chair recognizes Trustee Otto.
Yeah, I would just like to amplify a little bit of what was said about this new program in marine archaeology, and that is that the field itself is changing, and one of the ways that it's changing is that they're doing a lot more by remote censoring, and that's S-E-N-S-O-R, not C-E-N-S-O-R, to map places, preserve places without destroying them. And it's the way of this field in the future, and we are right on the cutting edge of that. And congratulations to Laurel for working on this. It matches nicely with our underwater robotics programs that Scott Fraser is doing, and so I'm very excited. Laurel is also on the, what we call the MICRE Board, the Marine Institute, Research Institute at the Aquarium, and they work very closely with the Aquarium in terms of things that are going on. And so it's a good partnership, and I congratulate you, and I think this is very much a cutting-edge course for Long Beach City College.
Other members? Chair recognizes Trustee Malauulu.
Yes, thank you. I would also like to just lend my remarks to, in favor of this course, and how excited we are to be able to offer it. You know, we are Long Beach. We've got the port, of course, we've got the beach, we've got the ocean, we've got the aquarium. And the fact that we're preparing our students for careers in anything marine-related, maritime-related, and that we are able to tie it with archaeology, one of the sciences, is phenomenal to me, because most people have an impression that archaeology is such a study of the past, and we are actually taking this into the future and being able to study, you know, using these tools. Let's see, is it a magnetometer? There you go. And then the sonar scanner? I mean, to be able to do that, that stuff sounds like something from outer space. So it's not your typical impression that you have, you get that vision in your mind. So I'd like to commend you for staying the course with this and writing a curriculum virtually from scratch. So really appreciate that. It was, you know, it was on my agenda today, and I wasn't able to get to the B building, but I will. And I'd like to audit the class somehow someday, especially when you guys put on wetsuits and go underwater, you know? I won't be doing that, but I'd like to watch. So thank you.
Thank you. Other question, comments at this time? It is, I was, it is, sometimes people don't realize what has to go into doing something like this, an entirely new field. It's here. So once again, we have the really innovative, but we also, a lot of times, people want to know why we, why colleges don't move quickly, and they don't sometimes understand the entire process it goes through to guarantee the integrity of the course, to make sure you can present the course in a proper way. And also, you have to roll in the fact that it goes before the state of California, the chancellor's office as well. So it's not just something that happens, but it is, once again, as we all are very proud of, the fact here at Long Beach, we're doing, opening up a new field, essentially. And so it's very exciting, and I look forward to the results on that one. So congratulations. Other members at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And Student Trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Thank you. Item 7.1, this is the 2017-18. This is a second quarterly financial status report. This is an action item. This is standard operating procedure for requirements. I'll start with a motion in a second, please. Motion by Trustee Malauulu, second by Trustee Zia. Superintendent President?
Yes, sir. I'm going to pass it to Vice President Betty Miller, who's going to talk to you about the progress that we have made on that operating deficit that has plagued us this year. We've made some really good progress on that, so I think you're going to be very excited by what you see. And so, Betty, feel free to please present.
Thank you.
Madam Miller?
This document is the 311Q, is how we refer to it. It is a reporting mechanism for the chancellor's office to provide them with information on district's fiscal stability and projections as they move forward. There's a couple items in here that I would like to point out. The next item that we'll be getting to, we'll give you a little bit more detail in terms of the budget that you adopted this year to where we are. But we are projecting an ending fund balance of $23,500, and this print is very small, an ending fund balance of $23,500, and this print is very small, $566,000, and that is an improvement over the budget that was adopted in September, and I will touch on a little bit of the steps that we've been taking to try to reconcile that and bring those numbers a little bit closer together even before this year ends. We are looking at the district being back into stability funding in the current year. The district did report over $20,000, it was $21,026, excuse me, FTEs for last year. That did take the district out of stability funding by utilizing some of the, some are FTEs. It was the right decision for the district from a financial perspective, and helped stabilize the funding as the district moved into this year. And those numbers will likely change for the current year as we progress. This is as of the end of December. There's a couple items, particularly in the footnotes, that I want to point out, and typically when they ask us if we are likely, have significant events happened, is there likely to be a problem going forward, either they're blank or you're reporting that, yes, everything is fine, but there are a couple things here that were significant for the district. There were, negotiations were completed, those expenditures related to those are reflected in the projected numbers that are presented in this document, and, and the plan at, at the current time is for those to be absorbed into this budget, but the district, even with that, is going to be able to see some improvement in that bottom line. The district did do a refunding of your bond series of $83 million, and that, while it doesn't provide additional resources for construction projects, it does save your taxpayers significant amounts in, in their tax bills over the time. And, and looking at issues that the district will be looking at moving forward is the ability to stabilize the FTEs, to be able to maintain the large district size related to that FTEs count, as well as being able to look at, the district is receiving a penalty in the current year because of the number of full-time faculty. There were a significant number of searches that were done this last year, not all of those positions were filled, and so the, the state assesses a penalty in the apportionment calculation. I feel the need to point out that the penalty very closely approximates what the cost savings are related to those positions. So while I understand and fully appreciate the value of the positions, from a fiscal perspective, taking that penalty hasn't damaged the district. And so if you have any questions on this particular report, I'll do my best to respond to them.
Members of the board at this time on this report? Chair recognizes trustee Otto.
Yeah. I, a, a, as, as we discussed briefly before the meeting, I, I, there were some things I wasn't sure I understood, and some things that I think I understand, but I'm not sure what they mean, and I, I went, I'm looking at Roman numeral seven, which is on page three of this report, which says, does the district have significant fiscal problems that must be addressed? The answer for this year is no, but for next year is yes, and there is a sentence in the explanation below with small type that says, "Our second quarter projections includes a $679,000 FON penalty," which you've just been talking about.
Yes.
Which is due to failed faculty searches, unforeseen retirements, and assignment shifts. What does assignment shifts mean?
Dr. Ramali will respond to that particular.
We had some unanticipated but very happy promotions of faculty into deanship ranks, and when they come into the deanship ranks, that leaves their position open.
Okay. I was, I, I wondered whether, I, I, whether we, I wanted to know the, the, the number of faculty and on, on a, with assigned time, or how much assigned time they had, and whether that number was going up or down. I, I don't know whether it is, but I, I thought that that might have something to do with this, but I'd, I'd love at some point in the future to, to understand that, because I think that that will have effects not only on our FON, but also on, you know, whether, how we're meeting our educational mission. Also, I'm curious as to how many non-faculty staff we've hired in the last year as opposed to what we had a year ago, because I think, too, that th, th, those numbers will, will have impacts on what it is that we're doing in terms of achieving our, our mission. I, I congratulate President Ramali, who, you know, seems to be aggressively attacking this deficit that we're all very, very worried about going into the future. I can't, I keep remembering that in, in 2018, we're paying to the State of California, to Pers, I guess I should say, about 9% of our retirement benefits, and that by 2025, that's going to go up to about 25%, and I'm not sure where that money's going to come from.
It's significant, yes.
Yeah, and so, and that will just eat into the monies that we get from the state. As noted in here, but just in passing, the, the funding proposal from the state this year, for the first time, introduced an element of performance funding. We're not sure exactly what that's going to wind up looking like if and when it's passed, but it, it's volat, volatile, and I've talked to people in other districts that are very concerned about what that's going to mean. The state also has a, a recommendation that they establish a statewide online college, and I know a lot of people up and down the state are very worried about whether that's going to take away some of our FTEs to go into that college from the FTEs's that we have here at Long Beach State, and so there's a lot that's up in the air, and so I think it's very important to, to maintain prudence, fiscal prudence as we go forward. So, those are my comments and questions.
Thank you, trustee Otto. We will absolutely get you that release time report, so you can see that. We're very excited to talk to you at this retreat about the very aggressive strategies that we are taking in a very planned way to continue to have this deficit go down, because there are long-term threats to that, the Persssters being one of them. Just to mention some of the wonderful faculty who've been promoted into the deanship ranks to give you an idea, we have Dean Rodden, we have Dean Moises Gutierrez, who you approved tonight, Dean Kenna Hillman, Dean Lisa Orr, so four of those were unanticipated, but beautifully, they're doing a fantastic job, so we congratulate them, just to give you a few names.
Thank you. Other, other members of the board at this time? I, a simple question that always comes up, I know with the faculty obligation number, FON, you know, we always talk in, in community college verbiage sometimes, the, when we do reassignments, and I heard some of the things about how we, that number gets moved around, and, and I'm sorry, but when you, as President Miller, when you made the comment about, we had talked in the past about paying the penalty versus trying to hire the, the people, and, and I didn't, when you started to say, and I, I lost, so the decision was that it was no longer prudent financially to pay the penalty and, versus hiring full-time faculty at a time when there was concern about, why are you hiring more full-time faculty when your enrollment is going down, and the fact you, you have other issues? So, so our decision, though, is that we're aggressively pursuing, though, hiring and not looking to the option of paying a penalty again, correct? Is that what you?
Well, the district had a, a significant number of full-time faculty that the calculations indicated needed to be hired, and given the significance of that number, it was important for your educational program that the district pursue hiring new full-time faculty, partly because there were as many as there were, many other districts were in the same hiring need, and not all of your searches were successful, and so it's the ones that weren't successful that the district has the penalty for. There's absolute value to an instructional program for having a full-time faculty in, in those positions, and that's why it's an incentive, disincentive kind of approach the state has taken to that hiring number. The, when I, when I was here last spring, we were looking at calculations of, is there a difference fiscally from what you're saving by not having the higher versus incurring the penalty, and ensuring that the district, in its hiring process, was making the right selections for the district, and not just pursuing it for the sake of the number? And I, I think that's probably a better way to.
Superintendent President?
Yes, sir, I can add, uh, uh, thank you so much, Betty Miller. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, not a cut-and-dry, it's an, it's an art, and, and we must be very pragmatic when we look at that FON, and I, let me give you an example. A and P, anatomy and physiology, we had had an unsuccessful search last year, and we are going out this year. The reason that we're going out this year is academic reasoning and enrollment management reasoning. A and P, if, is a barrier course that keeps students from achieving a number of different degrees. If they can't, we typically have a huge waiting list for these courses. If they cannot get that A and P, which sometimes is up to six credits, they will go somewhere else, and we lose a halftime or a full-time student, and that, and so what happens is, if we want to address the enrollment management problem and not lose these high-credit-taking students who are in a variety of different health and kinesiology and science STEM programs, we can fill that position, and that addresses an enrollment management need that decreases the bottleneck there. So it's a, it's a surgical approach that we always look at, both the financial and the academic need.
All right. Other members at this time? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, we have a motion in a second on item seven point one. Can you please call the roll?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kallog.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
And student trustee Chavez.
Aye.
Item seven point two, student trustee will not be voting on seven point two?
It's information.
Okay. This is an informational item. This is for the 2017-18 mid, mid-year budget performance report. I believe it actually falls in behind what we just did a presentation on. So, Superintendent President, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, Vice President Miller, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd actually like to start on the last page. That is, you'll notice about three-quarters of the way down the page, there is a line that says, "Ending Balance," and for the district, that's an important number. The, the district, in the adopted budget that was presented in September, that budget projected a ending balance for this June 30th of $21,714,000. Our current projections indicate that that number is more likely to be $23,566,000. It's an improvement of $1,800,000, a little bit more than that, and with Dr. Ramali's leadership and focus on making sure that we're making decisions that help improve, because any improvements that you're able to make in this current year are going to benefit the district in the budget year, and there are many unknowns for this upcoming budget year, particularly because of the new funding formula. I'd like to just touch base, and I'll do this very briefly, in terms of what makes up that $1,800,000. And so if we go back to the first page of the document, if you look at the second to the right column, this gives you what the variance is. This is the variance from what was previously in the budget to what we are now projecting, and the first number you see will be a negative $679,000. That's the projected penalty for not having filled all of the positions, and we discussed that a few moments ago. Partially to offset that, there is some one-dated mandated cost dollars that was not part of the original budget, it's $580,000. The district has received those dollars and is able to verify that they will be available. If we look at the back of that page, you'll see under a non-resident tuition fees, the district is projecting $200,557 more than what was included, again, in the adopted budget, and so your net increases to your revenue are about $101,000. I do need to point out, though, that you do have some salary savings that offset the reduction in revenue for the full-time faculty obligation. So if we move into the expenditure categories, and we're looking at all of our expenditure categories at this point, to see if there are areas that can be readjusted, that can be downsized, that can be right-sized to the size the district is at this point, to see if we can achieve even greater savings, not only for the current year, but for the budget year as well. In the salary and benefit areas, this reflects in savings, but primarily the increases due to negotiated salary schedules that have recently been approved. Other categories of expense are very few adjustments at this point. This is as of December. There's still six months left to go in the fiscal year, and it's premature to estimate what some of these might be. The reduction in election expense is a known reduction, and we were able to adjust that at this point. The large number that you see on the next page, it, it falls under one-time expenditures, and it's under professional services, and you see a reduction of $3,400,000. This number is the estimated amount of some one-time money that the district has set aside for, for business process reviews and improvements of your systems, and has previously been authorized for that purpose. The projections indicate there'll be about $1,500,000 of it spent in the current year. These dollars will be carried over and made available in the budget year. The net.
Sorry, Betty, can I just stop you right there? Can you go back to page four?
Yes.
The professional services, so we, that's 7994 is the actual, but we're also projecting the 3.749 again, that's right, I get a little lost, for the 2017, 2018.
On page four.
Where you said there was a reduction of like 3.7?
Okay. The professional services on page four, we're projecting that we will fully expand that budget at this point in time. There could very well and would typically be some savings there. We don't have something concrete in that category. On the next page, under professional services, which are the one-time dollars, that's where we're looking at dollars that will be unspent in the current year. The prior authorization is to spend it for the process review improvements, and that they are anticipated to be spent in the budget year, 2018, 19.
When does our budget year end again?
June 30th.
So as of 2017, December 2017, so are we, am I understanding this correctly, in the next six months from December, we're going to spend 3.7 million?
That 3.4 million is money that the district doesn't expect to spend this year, and so we are removing it from the budget and putting it down into a restricted component of your fund balance.
I got you.
And so it will be carried over and available in the budget year.
Got you, thank you.
And that will meet the needs of that programming for this upcoming year.
So it's not an actual savings, it's just?
That's correct.
Resequencing, okay.
It's not, it's not going to be spent, your fund balance will increase as a result of that. It's not a cut or a reduction to your budget.
Okay.
And all of that, then, does lead you to your new projected fund balance and of your $23,566,000. So you are in a, a better position than you were when your budget was first adopted. We are doing rigorous review, not only on the budget year coming up, but also for the current year as to whether there can be savings there. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Other members of the board at this time? Questions? Hearing none. It's an informational item only? Very good. Thank you. We'll then move on to reports. Eight point one, academic senate president.
Thank you, President Kallog. I just want to bring four items for the board. The first one, I want to welcome all the faculty and staff back to our spring semester, so we've seen a lot of life out there, and I'm sure students have found their classes, so I want to welcome them all back. I want to let the board know that on February 14, the curriculum committee held elections for a new curriculum chair. As you heard, Kenna Hillman, who was serving in that capacity, has now moved to associate dean. So Wendy Conning is the new curriculum chair, and she's going to be working very hard with Michelle Grimes in getting courses, certificates, and bringing things to the board in the future meetings. I also want to acknowledge Javier Villasenor, a counselor. He represented Long Beach City College and was one of the speakers at the. He represented Long Beach City College and was one of the speakers at the California Community College Digital Learning Day. I happened to be walking by when I saw him speak, so I want to congratulate him. And I also want to let the board know that on March 23, the Academic Senate is going to have, be having their retreat. The theme for our retreat is guided pathways. And I have confirmation for our Michelle Pilari and Randy Beach from the state that are going to be coming to educate the Senate as well as any of the other college bodies that want to learn about guided pathways and moving forward, what this is going to entail for our college. So that's March 23 for Senate Retreat at the Pacificos campus from 1:30 to 4:00. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point two, Classified Senate President.
Yes, thank you. I do want to let you know that in January, we hosted the California Community College Classified Senate Gathering, and it was a huge success. It was well attended, and I want to take a shout out to C.C. Sadler, who led the effort and had a great event. President Romali smoked and charmed the entire Senate that was there. She spoke of Classified's role in shared governance and how we could work together to have successful student success. Dr. Darla Cooper also spoke of guided pathways, and it was very informative. And we had several administrators there as well who were able to take part and listen to what she had to say. And she spoke about pathways emphasizing that student success was everyone's responsibility. And I just sent out an email to all the Classified that included 10 ways everyone can help support student success that she handed out to everybody at that gathering. So we hope to keep the charge going and keep everyone informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent President?
Yes. The first thing that I want to talk about is our strategic plan. At our retreat, we will be looking at progress along the strategic plan to help guide our discussion as our board self-evaluation. However, the SPOT team, which is the Strategic Planning Oversight Task Force, which is a subgroup of our shared governance body, the College Planning Committee, met and determined what our priorities should be this year. We took that advice. We said, "That sounds great." And we broke into 12 working teams made up of administrators, faculty, staff, and students. We call them slot teams. And the aim is to solve a particular issue related to the strategic plan and then institutionalize that and then move on into our next year priorities. We talked about this at State of the College, but what, as each team completes its exciting work, they will be bringing a presentation to the board to show you through a data analysis, which is both qualitative and quantitative, and the return on investment of those projects. I think you're going to be extremely excited. Each month will have a different presentation, 12 teams, therefore it will take a year to get through all of these presentations. The first one that's going to be coming to you, I think you're going to be really thrilled with. What we've done in order to maximize student completion is we have looked at those students who have over 45 units, and there are thousands of students in this category. We have analyzed what courses they need for completion, created a special schedule for them, and our counseling team has reached out to them. This has been very successful. I don't want to ruin the surprise next month, but not only has this been very successful in jumping up enrollment, it's been successful in jumping up the number of ed plans that we've achieved. And we know that the data shows us that if you're on ed plan, you have a higher propensity for completion. It will no doubt then jump up our completions. And a side note is that it will also jump up our triple SP revenue. So these are the magic bullets. When you can find things that aid completion, retention, and it helps your funding formula, everybody wins. So I think you're going to be very excited by this presentation. We also have a second presentation that's going to go along with that, and we call it the 60-plusers. We have 2,100 students currently who have over 60 transferable credits. What that means is these students are more than ready for a degree or a certificate. We have executed an action plan that targets 1,400 of them who are in our underrepresented groups, and you're going to love the numbers you see. So I don't want to ruin that surprise. Promise 2.0, the next version of the college promise. I've given you some preliminary information that this involves the redirected students from the Cal State Long Beach, who we are working diligently with Cal State Long Beach on those students on a dual-admission, dual-pathway program. I'm going to be sending out more details on that. We've been working hard with the Cal State Long Beach team on all the logistics and operations and legalities behind it. So far, it's going great. Dean Rogers out there in the audience has been working very hard on that. We've been talking to our Academic Senate here and our academicians here, who are also very excited about this. So this is Promise Next Generation Next Level, and it comes out of Long Beach, Promise One out of Long Beach, Promise Two out of Long Beach. So beware for Promise Three. So please mark your calendars for March 22 to celebrate 10 years of the promise, and we'll be announcing Promise 2.0. The budget, you will be seeing a, we have been very hard at work on strategically looking at the budget. As you know, we are an institution that has sized 2,000 fewer students with a high percentage of salaries and benefits. We have a strategic plan that we have worked on very diligently that stays away from the classroom and academics to rectify that problem very quickly. You are starting to see the effects of some of that work happen tonight, and there are very exciting plans that we're going to show you at the retreat to get your opinion and best advice on. Since I got here, I noticed that we need training in the following areas, so please look forward to training in the areas of effective meetings, time management, prioritization, and project management. We also have been looking at starting some curriculum in the area of FIRE. We are looking at a FIRE academy as well as other FIRE curriculum to resume training in this area with Long Beach Fire Personnel. The meetings are ongoing. No doubt, it will result in a variety of different contracts that we need to work through margin, but we are looking as this a way to drive enrollment FTES and serve a local community need. So I hope that you're really excited about that. The college, through its shared governance process, identified the need for mental health services on campus and came up with a committee to make a recommendation that they're calling Healthy Viking. And what that is, so we decided to then fund this through writing a grant. We were successful in winning a $250,000 grant to fund mental health services in our health center. I know this is very exciting for you, especially in light of recent events. We will be expanding mental health screening services. We're going to build culturally competent services and referrals. We're going to work on racial disparities connected to mental health. We're going to institute campus-wide stigma reduction activities and provide mental health education and training, including threat assessment and mental health first aid to our faculty and staff. So this is a tremendous, tremendous victory for the mental health of our students in our community. So congratulations. Now for the less pleasant news, as Trustee Otto mentioned, there is a newly proposed funding formula that looks at a variety of factors, including completions, transfer, and your number of BAG and Pell students. We, we have seen the initial cut of this. I don't want to alarm anybody. The initial cut does cut us over $10 million. However, the Chancellor's Office and the state is listening, listening to all the input. They're doing a great job listening to all the input. There is a CEO group that is providing input, a CBO group that is providing input. I have been very heavily involved in a single campus district caucus that has provided a tremendous amount of mathematical input that this certainly is the right way to go in looking at completions and performance. However, it needs to be mathematically tuned, and we are working on that mathematical tuning to make intent match the math. And there's been a tremendous amount of work on that. We're working with Dale Shimisaki. We will be getting letters out to our legislators this week to talk to them about the impact of this and the importance. So we will also be looking to the board to see if you can help us with those legislative conversations and hopefully join us on some of these legislative meetings as we talk about the necessity for this funding formula to be done accurately. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Student Trustee.
Good evening, everyone. Well, since last meeting, we were not in the spring semester, and yeah, now we're back in classes, so it's good. Currently taking four classes, three classes, and then one lab, so it's going really great. I mentioned that I was submitting my USC application in the last meeting at the PC campus, so I luckily got that done, and it was right on time. And I've been coordinating with Kyle Beasley, who's the person who gathers all the Long Beach City College applications regarding what documents are needed, and everything's set, so now it's just a waiting game. Aside from that, within the last month, I've had the opportunity to gather data and information from a variety of students on campus with the help of my ASB President Javier Salcedo, along with other members of the ASB concerning specifically with the ASB Viking Food Court. This is something that I wanted to work on since last semester, and finally I was able to get surveys and gather data on what students thought about our food and services here on campus. Luckily today, he was able to present that to the Auxiliary Board, and as we all heard, we will be meeting, we will be meeting and moving forward with, meeting with Dave, who's the food specialist at the Viking Food Court, hopefully addressing some concerns. I was able, this month, I was able to also sit down with Vice President Betty Miller to discuss a few things about the budget and to get a better understanding of the whole document itself, so I thank her for meeting with me. In addition, I would also like to thank Kim Anderson, who's part of the Guided Pathways team, to present to the ASB not just once, but twice, being able to come out and try to get the ASB board to get a better understanding of what guided pathway is and what's the process and how it's going to be implemented. We look forward to constantly working with her. Aside from that, I'd just like to give out two shout-outs with, a couple shout-outs within the, within the audience. I'd like to recognize Jared, who's part of our PC Council at PC Campus, Paulo Contreras, who's our ASB Secretary, along with my predecessor Alejandro Lomelí, who's located also in the audience. So thank you so much, guys, for attending the meeting. I know these guys have a really tough, a lot of stuff on their plate, and just having them attend, that, that means a lot to me. Aside from that, there was other concerns that Susan had brought to my attention about campus safety after what happened in Florida and what to do in certain situations with active shooters. What if, you know, we don't know, but you know, there's been some scares out there. A couple days ago, maybe about two days ago, there was threats to Norwalk High School, for example, and Surrillos College, which is located too far from that, they had confirmed that through their Twitter. But I mean, it's just, you know, really nerve-wracking for our students, the fact that they don't necessarily know that our staff and our faculty in each building has a designated person who's in charge of emergencies like that, but it's just gathering that information and being able to get that to the students. I know we've been, faculty and staff has been receiving the communications emails, saying that we will be providing more of those trainings available to the staff and faculty as a whole. And I also, during the meeting, during the meeting with Vice President Betty Miller, we were able to discuss that during the spring break, faculty and staff get trained to, to in certain encounters like that, and they have the whole simulation going on with it right here on campus. So I think that's really great, but just being able to get that information down to the students to let them know that we're ready for, in any case, in a situation like that. If something like that, worst-case scenario, were to happen, you know, we're prepared for a situation like that. And I know we always have our Long Beach PD right here located closely, so that's also a big help. But aside from that, that pretty much concludes my report, and thank you so much all for being here. It's also 6:05, which is really great, so.
Thank you. Next, we have Board of Trustees report. We'll start with Trustee Baxter, then go to Trustee Otto Malauulu. Trustee Baxter?
Okay, thank you, President Calog. I have a number of things I want to bring up. First is, I want to salute retiree counselor Margaret Brown, who is celebrating her 90th birthday and in honor of Black History Month. I want to salute her as the oldest African-American retiree we have. So Margaret, if you're watching, congratulations. You will also receive recognition from the college during the 90th anniversary. Then just activities that I've been to, on January 29, the Long Beach Century Club presented me with the Nell and Bob Kerriger Award. Both Nell and Bob Kerriger retired from Long Beach City College, and so it was quite an honor to receive that award, and I thank the Century Club for that and also Bob and Nell Kerriger for funding it. President Romali and I attended the Lakewood Rotary Meeting, and she gave a wonderful report on the college of what's going on. I also want to salute her for the State of the College luncheon. And along with President Romali, the entire staff, I thought it was the best luncheon we've had as far as participation. One of the things that President Romali did, which I think was very effective, is getting more people from the community. There were people there from Lakewood had a table, Signal Hill had several tables, so Avalon. So I think that's really important, that we spread the word about what's going on at Long Beach City College. And I'm, I'm so proud to represent my area and the entire college, and that really made me feel full of pride. Then we went to the Lakewood State of the City Luncheon on February 7, and I got to meet Dr. Demento. And if you're as old as I am, you know who Dr. Demento was, but he is a Lakewood resident. Then on February 12, I spoke before an auxiliary of Assistance League, Las Ramonas. This Friday on February 23, we had the American Association University Women STEM Conference on campus in T-1200 and then in various classrooms. They have been coming to Long Beach City College for 10 years. They've been doing this conference for 15 years, and it's 120 middle school girls who are interested in STEM majors. And first of all, I want to thank Danielle Bridgewater, who was the keynote speaker. And Danielle graduated from LBCC last year and is at Cal State Long Beach, and she had those 120 girls absolutely full of attention. Her story was incredible, and Danielle really represented us well and showed that even though you have struggles, you can succeed. And so I was really proud of her and so happy. I did not have anything to do with her selection. I found out when she was there, and she did a super job. They also had speakers from the different areas of STEM encouraging young women to get involved in the STEM program. Then on Saturday, President Romali and Josh Castellanos and I attended the Qingdao Sister City New Year Celebration in T-1200. The luncheon, the dinner was catered by Culinary Arts. They did a beautiful job, wonderful food. The audience was packed, and again, this showcased our college as a wonderful institution. Then I want to congratulate the Art Department, which has a new art exhibit, Plumline. It's in effect right now, going through the end of March, so if you get a chance. And then finally, on Thursday, we're having an event that, that Trustee Zia and I have been working on for about six months, and that is that Chef Haley in Culinary Arts volunteered to serve some of our food, what do you call that? Can't think of, what's the word?
Deprived?
Anyway, I don't want to, we're not calling them, but food, no, no, no.
Deprived.
No, no. Anyway, students who, who, thank you, Vice President Zia, food insecure students. And so President, I mean, Chef Haley is, and her students are going to serve 50 students on Thursday. Vouchers are available in the student health centers at both campuses. We are not putting out a big call because we only have a limited amount of food, but if you're hearing, and our student leaders are hearing, and know of students who need help, and the idea is to let them again know how important our students are to Long Beach City College, and we want to help them feel good. Food insecure, thank you very much. Okay. Oh, at 12:30 on Thursday, March 1st.
That's it? Thank you. You didn't say who Dr. Demento, so they don't think it's one of our faculty members. It was, for people that don't know, it was a radio personality back decades ago that was on the Sunday night shift late in the evening, I mean, and he would do weird things and play weird music.
Well, you were just a teenager at the time. I was much older.
I remember the stuff, so, but anyway, so not to be confused, that Dr. Demento was not part of our English faculty or someone like that, so. And I did not know he was a resident of Lakewood.
Well, and he was- And he was all dressed up in a top hat on.
He always wears a top hat, so. Trustee Otto, follow that one.
Thank you. Very tough act to follow. I'm going to focus on a trip that, that several of us took to Washington DC for the ACCT Legislative Summit. They do this every year. In February, it's an opportunity to learn about what's going on at the federal level with regard to community colleges. Some of you know, but most of you don't know, I suspect, that in September of last year, the California Community College Board of Governors voted to approve the Vision for Success prepared by the Chancellor's Office, and really reflects the, the insights and vision of Chancellor Oakley. And, and the Vision for Success called for the system to work towards the, to five system-wide goals, including, number one, increase by at least 20% the number of California Community College students annually who acquire associate degrees, credentials, certificates, or specific skill sets that prepare them for in-demand jobs. Two, increase by 35% the number of California Community College students, system-wide, transferring annually to UC or CSU colleges or universities. Three, decrease the average number of units accumulated by community college students earning an associate's degree from approximately 87%, that's the average now, down to 79%. Four, increase the percent of existing career technical education students who report employment in their field of study from the most recent statewide average of 60% to an improved rate of 69%. This is within five years. And finally, reduce equity gaps among the, above, the above measures by 40% within five years, and close the achievement gaps entirely for good within 10 years. And with that, as the vision that California went to Washington for, or with, I should say, we learned a lot about what the big issue in Washington right now is, the Higher Education Act reauthorization. The last time the Higher Education Act was reauthorized was in 2008. It's been a topic of conversation every single year since then, and some people believe that they may be able to get it reauthorized this year. Most people think that it will not, certainly not in its entirety, and many people are afraid that it, if it did, that it wouldn't include the things that they, that they would like to see it include. The principles that they're, that they've agreed upon, at least what the community colleges have agreed on at a national level, are keeping college affordable, simplifying financial aid, driving strong student outcomes, ensuring effective oversight of community colleges, and that doesn't mean public, only public community colleges, but also the for-profits, because the status of for-profits, which I'll mention in a minute, has changed dramatically, or has proposed to change dramatically, under the administration that's in Washington right now. The act that is before both houses of Congress is called the Prosper Act, and the Prosper Act is ironically named the Prosper Act, because a lot of what it does is eliminate many, many programs that we currently enjoy. The Prosper Act calls for us to support additional resources for full-time Pell Grant recipients. That's an extra $150 per semester. In California, that doesn't make that much difference, because we really don't have that many students receiving Pell Grants. And in fact, one of the things that has been an ongoing discussion in California is to increase the number of students who get that form of federal financial aid. It's all, another goal is to support Pell Grant eligibility for short-term programs. Now, it's only really available for students that are going to get, to transfer or to complete degrees, and it's not available to people that are just getting certificates or doing career technical education work. There's also a concern over the liability of unearned financial aid. The Prosper Act would change the rules for how Title IV money, aid at college, and how much the colleges must return those monies if a student drops out. And the possible consequences of this on many California community colleges is really dire, because, for example, if, if a student enrolls but can't finish the semester for any reason whatsoever, the student would be asked to repay 10% of the monies that he was given for that semester, or the term that, that he was enrolled in. But the colleges would be asked to repay 50% of those monies. And for example, the Los Rios Community College District, which is four colleges in the Sacramento area, estimates that that cost alone to their district would be over $12 million. And think of the budget discussions that we had earlier tonight, and if you want to add $12 million onto that, not for anything that we did, but for something that students, oftentimes for very legitimate reasons, death in the family, somebody loses a job, somebody has a child, all those things. So, they're fighting vigorously to not allow that to happen. There's also a concern over changes to financial aid resources for students. Prosper would eliminate many financial aid programs that enable students to, to attend college. For example, it would eliminate the Federal Supplemental Education Opportunity Grants for low and moderate-income students. We have lots of those students here at Long Beach City College, and that program would just be eliminated under the, what the Prosper Act reads right now. There is also concern over the elimination of Title III-A, which strengthens institutions, they call the Strengthening Institutions Program. Title III-A is a competitive institutional aid program that supports minority-serving colleges and those located in rural areas. So, in addition to those goals, the ACCT and, including California community colleges, took a very strong position that we need to protect Dreamers. We need to protect DACA students, that we need to support the immediate enactment of legislation that will protect those eligible for the DACA program, as well as provide them with long-term security and an opportunity to apply for U.S. citizenship, following through a, 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 application process for citizenship. That we also rigorously supported workforce in the 21st century, and an emphasis on, a better emphasis on workforce development. What I've done is I've made a bunch of copies of this program that ACT, ACCT has supported, and we're going to put them out at the end of this meeting, if anybody wants to pick up a copy. I didn't put them out earlier, because I've learned over many years of talking to people, that if you give them something to read before you talk to them, they'll read it while you're talking to them. So, we didn't want that to happen. So, things are going great at Long Beach City College. I'm very happy that the spring semester has started, and I'll not mention other things that we've been doing here, because I think the work in Washington DC was just so important. That's all.
Thank you very much. Trustee Malaloo?
First of all, I'm sick, so apologies to everybody. Yesterday, I was on the phone, and, and someone said, "Thank you, sir," when they were hanging up, so I must have sounded really bad. Just a couple of things. Welcome back to second semester. I hope everybody is off to a very strong start, both students, faculty, and staff. Very excited. We halfway through the year, and we've got the finish line, which is graduation in plain sight, so just, you know, keep working toward that. We are going to get there together. It's been a relatively light month for me, because I've been under the weather, and I've been, did a little bit of traveling for work. But I would like to share a couple of things. On January 29th, I was also with Jenny and Jeff at the Century Club. Jenny, congratulations once again on your honor. It was a really fun night. In addition to Jenny being honored, I believe Trustee Zia was there also. We also got to meet some local Long Beach celebrities, which was kind of neat. As a board, we got to hang out with, you know, rap stars and NFL stars, so it was not something that we usually get to do. So Jenny, thank you for that, for including me at your table. It was a lot of fun. On February 2nd, and I'd like to commend our Athletics Department for making this happen. Actually, it was February 1st. We welcomed an 11-year-old little girl on campus, and every month, I always, you know, since my very first board report, when I gave Myra some pictures to post, every month, I always say I'm going to do it, and I never do, but of all months in two years, if anything, I wish I had remembered to send Myra this photo. The Athletic Department was part of an organization, kind of like a Make-A-Wish, very similar to that, and we have a little girl in our district, 11-years-old, who is ill, and her wish was to play, I'm going to cry, softball in college. And Long Beach City College, our softball team granted her that wish by bringing her on campus to sign her National Letter of Intent. And it was such an emotional event, and I just wish I had thought to get that photo up, because it's in my phone right now. Her name is Elise, and she, just congratulations to our softball program, our Athletics Department, all of our staff who made that happen, everybody for getting the word out. Her family was here. She was taken out of school early, and we did it in the, in the Q Building, and it was just the sweetest thing. She signed a letter of intent to play softball at Long Beach City College. Give me a break. It doesn't get sweeter than that. So, just really made me glad, especially because, you know, my family's so into sports, and my girls play softball. On February 2nd, we had the State of the College, which was fantastic. President Romali did an outstanding job. The energy was, you could, you know, cut through. It was so thick in the room. I invited people from the community in my district, and one of those people, without me asking, picked up the 90th anniversary invitation for the foundation, the 90th anniversary of the college on June 16th, and said, you know, I'm going to make a donation for this. And that wasn't why he was invited. Of course, now I'm going, you're invited every year. But he agreed to make a donation without even being asked, just because he was so moved and overwhelmed by the energy in the room that day. On February 14th, I was on campus when the helicopter landed. I believe we made history. I don't think there's ever been a helicopter to land on campus. I posted about it being a great way to show love between our students, the community, and our police department, our men in blue, women in blue also. And it was also the Students and Ice Cream with the Cop Day, so that was a lot of fun. Last Friday, I was here with several of us for the STEM Conference, 250 girls. We need a bigger venue. We couldn't fit across the way. We kept having to bring in chairs, and it still wasn't enough chairs. So, next year, we need to have it in the gym or someplace bigger, because events like this really need to grow. And then, something neat that I want to share with you, this past Saturday, I was asked by the KPA, which is the Khmer Parent Association in the Cambodian community, to offer closing remarks at their third annual mother-daughter conference. And I was only supposed to be there, 2:30 till 3:00 for closing remarks, but my mom and I ended up going, and we were there all day. I just wanted to do something with my mom. And I was so blessed, because there was a panel around nine, between 9:00 and 11:00 in the morning, of different mothers and daughters, and there was one particular mother-daughter team who really caught my attention, because they were Polynesian, and the mother and daughter shared their story, their testimony, and everybody had really moving stories. And I was really touched by theirs, because I understood the lingo. I understood the words she was saying about the fa samoa and raising your kids in a Polynesian culture, and I, I got what she was saying. So after, I went up and introduced myself to her, and unbeknownst to me, the daughter of the duo is one of our own employees, which made me realize that so many of our wonderful staff members are in the community doing things, and we don't even know about it. The fact that this, one of our employees, her name is Kolini Fepeulai Tumalatay Coleman, and I have credentials to be able to pronounce that correctly, so. But Kolini, I just, you know, if you, if this gets to you, I just want to tell you that I didn't know that you worked at LBCC until after, and I was so proud of you and your mom being up there, and in a way, you were representing us, and the testimony that you shared was very unexpected. And to anybody in our staff, anybody that's our faculty member that does things like that in the community, we need to know about it. We, the board sent, shoot us an email, get it to Jackie, get it to us, and let us know, because here you are, giving up your Saturday to share with the Khmer Parent Association for this wonderful activity in downtown Long Beach. So, just really made me proud. Thank you, everybody. Have a great rest of the semester. See you guys next month.
Thank you. Vice President Zia?
Thank you, President Kellogg. I don't have a report, other than just echoing my colleagues' remarks about the State of the College. It was fantastic. It blew everybody's mind. It was 525 people, and of course, Superintendent President Dr. Romali, you were so magnanimous, and it was so beautiful. I still have people asking me about you and want to know you, and there's still a buzz. So, thank you for your leadership. We're very lucky to have you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I appreciate my colleagues, because you've essentially said everything that I need to bring up, from the hot dogs. Congratulations, everyone, to be ahead of the game, because when all the students showed up, we had more than enough hot dogs in place. They did a great job in preparation for that. Jenny Baxter, again, congratulations on being awarded at the Century Club. That's always, that's always a great event. And my appreciation to Trustee Otto for going into, and I'm just, this is the only thing I will touch very briefly on, and thank you to Trustee Malaloo for bringing up that Make-A-Wish with our Athletic Department. Those are really pretty inspiring things, and not a lot of people knew about what was going on there. So, as far as with the ACCT, I could not probably do a better job than what Trustee Otto went through, everything on there. The biggest issues we do have coming back from the federal government is that there are a lot of challenges. When we do go back there for it, you realize a few things. Number one, California is very unique. Unique in the sense that the structure we have, we're the largest institution of higher education in the country by far. The structure, the fact that we have 72 districts, 72 elected boards, we have a very large delegation from California there. The reason for that is because there's a lot of things that do affect our system, even though, as was mentioned, things like Pell Grants or other funding, but you're still talking about billions of dollars that funnel through the federal government to the state of California and into our systems. And so, without repeating what Trustee Otto was going through on all the details, but there are questions that we are going to have to answer, and to be up on that as, as the legislative season moves forward. Their bills will start to be generated. They are right now. We'll start to find out what really is going to be, have any type of hearings or votes. But the one thing that I did pull out of that, among others, was that the question, and it really gets a little bit lost, is that the question of accountability. Now, that is accountability, because you have a lot of the for-profits colleges who are back there with a lot of money to spend, and they're spending it because it's survival for them. And we sometimes run smack in the middle of their, their agendas, but at the same time, we did not want to be in a position of saying we don't want to be accountable. And that's where you're starting to see a little bit more of where there's issues, not only in Sacramento, but Washington DC, about putting colleges to become more accountable on how they do things. That also, though, affects tremendously your funding mechanism. And I, and I won't go into a lot of the details on that, but what I do want to touch on is that I talked to Superintendent Romali when we were discussing this, and what we're going to try to do, and she's going to take the lead, working with staff on that, about how we can possibly help educate our local, our local legislators. Our local legislators are strong advocates for the community college system in general, and Long Beach City College in particular, but we are looking at possibly having an opportunity to have, where we're going to structure things for them here on site, to give them firsthand experiences, to, so they can see exactly what it means when you're talking about this. With the, with the whole elaborate issues going on in Sacramento, with the, with the reauthorization, that is a massive issue. And I don't know, as, as Trustee Otto mentioned, if it's going to get a vote or not, but then there's a lot of issues that also flow in and out with that as well. And he brought up a good point with DACA. DACA is very clear, until it gets wrapped around a lot of other issues. So, we thought that'd be a good way to, when we really can have our legislators and, and, and this is really stems from a conversation I had with, when I was back there with some of their staff people, about how best to do this, because we all know that everyone's working through the halls and talking to them. Sometimes, it's multiple districts showing up with the same members of Congress, and they're all, we're all saying essentially the same thing. So, how we can do a better job of presenting that. So, very valuable information. It is critical. We stay... that. So, very valuable information. It is critical. We stay on top of it. What we learned from there, we now have to take in the next step. And I think that we'll be able to put something together to really address that. But what is going on in Washington DC does have an impact on us. Sometimes you don't feel it directly because it was mentioned with Pell Grants, things of that nature, but nonetheless, it still has an impact on us with all the other legislation that takes place. So, I appreciate the, and it's always good to give an update on it, and so I thank Trustee Otto for making up those points. With that, I have no other items, so we will move forward. There is nothing else for trustee committees. There's no reports to come out at this time. Future reports, as actually was mentioned, 9.1, the Strategic Plan, and as our superintendent did mention, you're going to begin to see that on our agenda now. That is really to address also with accreditation that you can see in our agenda. We did this at one time. It somewhat faded away over a period of time, intentionally or not. And we're going to start agendizing that so we can make sure that we show everybody the progress we're making with our strategic plan, which is critical on our goals. And if we agendize it that way, we have, we can be addressed during the accreditation process as well. So, that's the future reports that are coming before us. With that, our reports of the bargaining associations. They have a total of five minutes each. If they would like to come and speak, please do so. Are we putting up the really obnoxious clock? No, you're not doing that to me. Yes, yes, I want the really obnoxious clock. Or else I'll be the one doing it, so.
You won't need it, okay.
All right, welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent President Ramali, President Kellogg, members of the board, vice presidents, faculty, staff, students, and members of the community. Janey Hunt, our Faculty Association President, and just a couple of points I want to convey. First, it's great to be back into our semester. I've received comments from faculty that are very appreciative of the retro checks we received in February for the 2016-17 year, and we look forward to one more check here in March. So, thank you for good negotiations last fall. Also, this Saturday, we are hosting a Faculty Association, planning our retirement workshop on Saturday, and so we've got probably 60 faculty signed up to come. We're bringing stirs in. And just a quick reminder to our board, we had a SERP a couple of years ago in 2015, Supplemental Early Retirement Package, and many faculty took that offer. So, hopefully in another couple of years, i.e. 2021, the college would reconsider, or consider this again. It's a cost savings to the district, and it's also a win to our faculty who would like to retire early. I want to give a shout-out to Superintendent President Ramali. The faculty are pleased with her leadership. We've seen it on so many fronts. She talked about the slot teams that she's created to address things like enrollment, the mental health grant, changes that are coming. The State of the College event was also fantastic, and we just want to applaud your leadership. The morale at the college is in a good way, and as we face fiscal issues in the upcoming year, we have good confidence in your leadership. So, thank you. And just want to-
Thank you, that's very kind. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. We want to, or I just want to make an announcement. This Thursday, there is a People's State of the City in Long Beach. It's an annual event. It's on Thursday, March 1st, and it's at 6:30 at the First Congregational Church on Cedar Downtown Long Beach. I have some flyers. I will pass them to you if anyone is interested to attend. The California Faculty Association is one of the many cosponsors. Long Beach City has been in the past. We are not this year, but I will still be attending. It's a very insightful event about what's happening from community organizations' perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The public comment on non-genetic item, then we move forward. I have one speaker, Dwayne Schaefer, on Superintendent Valuation.
Maybe two, maybe two.
I would ask, what Superintendent President Valuation, but I'll leave that for you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Dwayne Schaefer. It's been a long time since I've stood before you all, when I was union president some years ago, and I don't miss this place too much. But my reason for being here tonight is that on Thursday, on Friday, when we had our union meeting, there was a discussion about Dr. Ramali's evaluation. I am not on her evaluation team, but I, as an individual, wanted to stand before you and say I am so impressed with our current Superintendent President, Dr. Ramali. She has done some excellent things, went through some uncharted waters that were not very comfortable, but were necessary to take place. I know that in Student Services, we're ecstatic with some of the actions that are taking place as we're all involved without recruiting. We're looking at our Welcome Center. We're looking at our career program and stuff, and she is spearheading that. So, I wanted to come here publicly and say thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for doing the heavy lifting. And I'm not on your evaluation, so you don't have to worry about this, being paid or anything, but I do want to say thank you. And continue in the same vein, because it takes a while to turn an ocean liner in the waters, and I totally understand that, but you have done a lot. And, I'm going to call you Dr. Malauulu. Well, you've been upgraded. I was going to answer your question about the helicopter landing. It's not the first time that a helicopter has landed here at Long Beach City College, particularly in the quad and also over in the football field. That was done by Deborah Peterson some years ago in working with students in a career called tomorrow's Aeronautical Museum. So, that's what happens when you're around here for 22 years. You've got a lot of history, a lot of history. So, again, thank you, Dr. Ramali.
Thank you.
Professor Schaefer, thank you. I got a little nervous when you said Superintendent Valuation there. My stomach dropped. But I'm glad that my stomach had no need to drop. Thank you. That is very, very kind. I'm truly humbled. The counselors and the faculty continue to provide, you know, these aren't my ideas, the Welcome Center and whatnot. These are your ideas. All I am is someone who brings them to life for our students with your help. So, I really thank you guys for coming up with these fantastic ideas of where we can take the college for the future. Couldn't do it without you, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Alejandra Lemely, on the legislative priorities of students.
How's it going, everyone? So, my name's Alejandra Lemely. Those of you who haven't met, members of the board, administration, students, and members of the public. I used to serve on the Board of Trustees the past two years, and I'm looking forward to addressing you now. I wasn't specifically planning to make a public comment. I walked in late. Jackie, so sorry for turning in a little behind schedule, but thank you for accommodating the quick time lapse. Essentially, my comments today are a little bit about the conversations that you had earlier today. I know there were discussions about the reauthorization of the Master Plan for Higher Education. And then, Trustee Malauulu mentioned that we should be knowing about some of these conferences or some of these educational opportunities that we have been attending. So, I do want to let you know publicly that I will be participating in a panel with the Assembly Budget Select Committee on Thursday at President City College, priority being the Master Plan for Higher Education. So, I'm looking forward to speaking on issues around student equity, student success, academic success in regards to transfer remediation and guided pathways. I'm really excited for that, and those opportunities have always been, you know, something I've been blessed with here, the opportunities here provided through Long Beach City College and our partnerships with the state as well. But more of the comments I wanted to mention earlier today was, I know there's this drive, this need to speak more with our legislators, right, to talk to them, to communicate some of the issues that we all face. I would urge you all to strongly look into a continued partnership with our local student government because a unified voice in those types of concerns is better than an opposing voice. So, I do want to let you know that, again, we have these funds available through the Student Representation Fee specifically for advocacy and legislative priorities and policy proposals. So, students are always at the ready. You know, students can use a little bit more training, you know, but if you all feel, you know, the need or the want, I would strongly encourage you all to look into that partnership and encourage you all to build a voice, right, and hopefully find some time to better align yourselves with those groups if we're going to move forward with any types of policy proposals or policy, you know, asks in our legislature, both statewide and federal. Thank you.
Thank you, Alejandra. For board members, he's been very busy doing a lot of activity in Sacramento. I don't know if you're getting paid, but he's been doing a lot of work up there, which is outstanding. There is no need for a second closed session. So, at this time, I will ask that we adjourn the meeting. We're going to adjourn to March 27, 2018 Board of Trustees meeting, but we also have a retreat on March 13th next week for the board. So, and that will also be, that will be not here, will be offsite for the board retreat. Without objection, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much, and good night.